Let's go ahead and get started. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Hope.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Von Breckhorst.
Here.
Tonight's invocation is.
Uh, Patton Thompson.
Okay, and tonight's invocation is, invocation is from Pat Thompson, our Fudge of Allegiance, from Juneville. So we could rise to the invitation. He is here. Okay, then let's go with the Fudge of Allegiance. Jim?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any commission reports?
Several.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Mark Chipman asked if I would do reports for her in her absence, and so bear with me just a moment while I get to the correct screening.
And while you're doing that, I'd like to say that that Mark Chipman is out of town and had had asked to be excused for tonight.
Graciously allowed her. Okay, as far as the library goes, the library once again is incredibly busy. Uh, they have had several successful events the last month, and there is a few more on their way coming. One of the ones that people might want to know about is June 6th, there is a LILI training. LILI, L-I-L-I, stands for linking libraries. Uh, it's something that I used to use exclusively when I taught English. And it is a service that our state of Idaho pays for that allows and connects all of our citizens of Idaho to public, uh, not public, well, they are public, but published resources and research documentation. So if you are going to write your own articles and not use ChatGPT, this is a great place to go because it's where you can do your own research. You'll have access to historical documents, uh, film clips and things like that. So it's lili, L-I-L-I dot org. That training is June 6th, and you are welcome to join them. They're also going to be celebrating the many volunteers that helped at the library, so you are welcome to join. They had PBS there for an exciting preview of Ms. Austin with a handful of people that showed up. They were hoping for a bit more, but they are looking forward to another one that will come later. And then Buck Sawyer had a book talk and thirty people showed up for that. They were very excited over that. And they have a free little library that's coming together. Uh, they contracted with HM Consulting to put together some shelves and created some red things that are going to make it look more Weasery inside, which is great. Can't get enough of that red. And then finally, they just had four thousand, four, four thousand forty-four books checked out with thirty-two hundred people walking through the door and several new cards that were checked out. So, uh, very active, and they're doing wonderful things at the library. For her next one, which is the Commission, uh, Weasor Architectural Preservation, Preservation Commission. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, Washington County gave them money that they are grateful for. Apparently it happens. Uh, and what they are working on right now is creating a list of endangered historic places in Weasor. So, um, I think there is a fear of us losing some of our historical sites within the city. So they're going to create a list and then have further discussion on what they can do to help try to preserve some of that history before it is torn down, uh, or things happen to it. And they're also incredibly grateful to, uh, a girls' group from one of the LDS wards that primed the Eaton Depot on Friday before survey, and then an incredible thank you to those that participated in survey who went in and finished painting the, uh, Eaton Station. Uh, so they're very grateful for that. And they also contracted with HM Consulting, Herbert Miller, who has created a new website for them. So if you'd like to check it out, it is weasorhistory dot work. It's very fancy. Okay, those are her two. So then we get to mine. Economic Development met. Uh, Economic Development is our purpose is shifting, right? We're waiting for a big project to come to us, and so at this point, the group will kind of, um, decrease the number of times it meets because we are grateful for having Main Street that has stepped up and is is starting to do some of those things, as is our Chamber of Commerce. So there are other organizations in town that have kind of taken on the role that Economic Development originally started with. So, uh, we will continue to meet when it comes to helping fund some of the projects that Main Street wants and so forth. But we are going to take a break for a month and then come back and approve some bills and then take a break for another two months, maybe, unless a project in that point, in that point in time comes up. So Economic Development served its purpose. Our signs are going up. All those things are moving forward. We're going to start to step back until we have another project for us to really dive into and let the other organizations flourish in town. Our Design Review Committee also met. They will move further forward later, uh, pending tonight's process. So you will see later in the, our schedule, our agenda, that you will see what the Design Review Committee has been working on for two, three years? Long time we've been working on this thing. So we're excited that it's finally on the table, but we will need after that to see where we need to go from there. And then the last one is going to be our Weasor River Animal Shelter and Rescue. Um, I think last month I mentioned that they were going to an exciting conference in Las Vegas, and so they have attended the Las Vegas Conference. And they have come back with amazing opportunities for Weasor, including ways to tag animals, including, uh, some things that they won. Uh, I don't want to steal their thunder uh, because I don't know if they're presenting today, and I think they're presenting some things today. But we're very, very excited for them and the work they continue to do and the progress that is being made as they continue to look out for the animals that are sometimes forgotten or neglected. So a shout out to them. If you have one more information, I'll share the notes with you. I have one of those. And then I'm done talking.
I share too.
No. For now.
Okay, are there any committee reports?
I'm sure one of those was a committee.
That's fine. That's fine. Okay, uh, department reports, Natasha?
So Mayor and City Council, here's your department reports for twenty, April of twenty twenty-five. The city of Weasor, um, has fifty-one full-time employees and four part-time. Um, the Weasor Police Department had twenty-eight adult arrests. Um, twenty-five were misdemeanor, three were felony. Um, no juvenile arrest. There was fifty-three citations, seventeen being misdemeanor, thirty-six being infractions. There was four hundred and fifty-two calls for service. Thirty-four were case reports, three felony, twenty-five misdemeanor, four accident, and two incident. Um, there was nineteen dog complaints. Five of those were impounded, six were returned to owners, and one was transferred out. There's two cat complaints. One was impounded, impounded, and there was three wildlife. I believe they were possum. Um, city of Weasor ordinance complaints. There was four parking, seven VIN inspection, and, um, ten storage containers. There was also one warning. Um, the wastewater department, April's flow for twenty twenty-four was twenty-seven million, six hundred and ninety thousand. April's flow for twenty twenty-five was thirty-two million, two hundred thousand. April's daily average flow was one million, seventy thousand. Um, the wastewater department cleaned clarifiers and superchlorinated to kill algae. They started using old drying beds to dry biosolids to save money. And they replaced nine bearings on the belt press and installed new air handlers. The water department, water production for April of twenty twenty-four was seventeen million, twenty-seven thousand. April of twenty twenty-five was seventeen million, four hundred, sorry, five hundred and forty-six thousand. Um, the water department repaired three water services that were damaged on the East Commercial Project. Two operators went to the Idaho Water Conference. They relocated a fire hydrant at East Second and Commercial. Um, they also rebuilt a service on West Fairview, and they installed irrigation pipeline at the airport. The electric department's power consumption for March of twenty twenty-four was four million, six hundred thousand and fifty-seven kilowatts. March of twenty twenty-five was four million, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-five kilowatts. Um, the electric department upgraded, um, a twenty-five KVA transformer to a thirty-seven point five at the golf course for the new construction that's going in across the street. They trenched and pulled wire to the new cover area at Memorial Park. Um, they started construction on the new truck shed at the pole yard. They replaced five burnt-out bulbs on the Oregon Bridge, and they continued meter changeouts throughout town. Um, the street department finished the rehab on sidewalks and fire pits at Memorial Park, prepped and poured a new sidewalk from the football field bathroom to the grandstand, uh, making that ADA compliant. Uh, started prep work on the top of football field for new curb gutter and sidewalk, removed and installed stormlines on the East Commercial Project, got all irrigation systems up and running, and they started alley cleanup. The recreation department, youth soccer has finished for the year. Baseball registrations are complete. Teams are put together and uniforms are ordered. Games will start May nineteenth. Um, Joe Malley is putting a limit on the number for youth golf. He does not have enough volunteers to keep it safe for the kids. So you've, the youth golf will run from June ninth to June thirteenth. Youth track will be May twenty-sixth to the thirty-first. And the tentative opening date for the pool is May twenty-sixth. Um, that is subject to change. He does not know how many guards he will have. So that'll depend on that. Um, the building department issued four building permits this month, one patio cover or deck, two accessory building, one dwelling alteration addition. They did forty-six inspections and eight consults. Mayor and City Council, that concludes your department reports for April of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, you've all had a chance to look at the last meeting. And are there any changes or anything?
Mayor, I've, I've moved to approve the minutes of the April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting as written.
Second.
So you've moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. And has the penance, that he had a chance to look at the bills?
Mr. Mayor, the fire community has met, reviewed bills, and we are willing to present them to you to be signed and warrants issued as necessary.
Okay.
Second.
They've moved in second. Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Blackwell.
Yes.
Um, Hope.
Yes.
Von Breckhorst, yes. Hahn?
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you. Um, and our creditors, thank you also. Moving on to unfinished business, uh, we have, uh, unfinished business dealing with the impact area, and I believe here upon this, Larry.
I am. So zoning committee met. Uh, naturally, uh, Natasha was kind enough to drive us around town to show us the, the areas that, that had, uh, were recommended for, uh, inclusion, to be sent to the Washington County Commissioners. And there was, there was one area just north of, of Altman that we were just kind of curious as to why, why, uh, it was not included, uh, as we drove around. But based on, on, on our meeting, I'd, I'd recommend approval to, to the proposed impact area to Washington, to the Washington County Commissioners with clarification on the area north of Altman.
If you don't know where that is.
I'm just like, I don't have a map of my life.
Steve Patterson's?
Yeah. Just more of a golf course. There's a single road that goes out there, and you look at it, and if I had money, which I doubt, but if I had money, that's where I would want to build a house because of beautiful views up there. Um, and, and it was not on the impact area. But all the other areas that we saw, I thought were great. They made sense to us. And it looks as though town is already starting to expand in those different areas. So Altman was just our curiosity. Yeah. So I would, I would recommend, I'd make a motion that we accept the impact area with the clarification on Altman Street and, uh, make recommendation for it to be moved and passed to our commissioners.
Thank you.
Final approval. So did you?
All second.
All second. I was second Larry's motion after restating it for my own needs.
Since this does not involve any dollars, we'll just have a voice vote. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Larry, and thank you. Sterling?
Repeater.
Yeah.
I'll just be quiet.
New business. We have a public hearing on the design review ordinance. Are there, we'll open this up, uh, for public discussion. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak favorably?
So first, I think we need to have somebody just kind of present what the design review is.
Okay.
Um, so Sterling, since you're.
Oh, man. Where's Tony? Okay, the design review i- is a committee that has been formed about three years ago. Uh, and our job has been to take those, uh, development plans that come to us and to review them. And then kind of on the side, one of the additional jobs that we were asked to kind of formulate and create were design guidelines that would help new businesses and new construction in town have some sort of cohesiveness to it so that it looked like what we want Weasor to look like. Probably, uh, a very broad example that's very specific would be like McCall. When you go to downtown McCall, everything is very stylized. They're specific colors. Now, that is quite extreme, and there's a lot of money in McCall, and we recognize that. But what we wanted as a committee is to make sure that when people come to see Weasor, Weasor has that charm that we can see, that we recognize, that makes us feel comfortable. And so sometimes that means making sure that we have a certain kind of material on the outside of the building or certain flowers and landscape that is natural to our area so that things blend together. Um, certain rules about fencing. How high should they be? Are there specific colors? Do we want a bright yellow fence surrounding property, or would we prefer it to be natural tones? So those are the kind of, uh, guidelines that the committee has been working on for, like I said, almost three years on deciding what, what do we want Weasor to look like as people move in, as businesses change, and as things grow and are built. And I think everyone can recognize in the last two years, the, it feels like sudden growth in, in buildings that are popping up around town and, and us going, oh, oh, I wish we had that committee. Because I would have changed that one thing, right? I would have done this to make it fit better. Some of those companies have been great and have taken our recommendations because that's all we could do. Tonight, what you're seeing is, uh, the official adoption, we hope, depending on what the community wants, of, of those organizations so that the committee becomes an official step in getting your building permit or, or whatever that permits might be to make change to a building downtown. So that is ultimately what it is. So, uh, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, it includes things like appropriate lighting, color choices, signage, um, roofing materials, fencing, parking. It's, I mean, it's quite comprehensive, and it was a lot of fun. I learned so much about other communities our size, bigger, smaller, uh, more affluent, less affluent, and just what we can do as, um, as a city to preserve what makes Weasor special. And so that's what is in that plan and that review.
And already the committee has, has helped the council pass an ordinance on landscaping for, for ground businesses.
Yeah, so you.
That's been a big, that was been, was a big help, and it was quite extensive.
For example, if I can add to that, um, our Maverick, right? Maverick was one of the first major companies that agreed to our, our stipulations, if you will, which is why there's the natural stone, which is why there's some of that specific landscaping around there. Uh, they were gracious to listen to our recommendations and desires, and they made those changes. Um, and then I think the other one was Walgreens. So you'd see there are flowers that Walgreens has put in. There's very specific design ideals behind it, although there were some things they weren't really willing to do. Um, we were hoping we could have gotten another business next door to change a few things, but that's okay. That's what we're, that's what tonight's about. So, yeah.
And thank you very much for all the hard work and dedication.
We appreciate the thank yous. We'll take a cup of coffee. But not McDonald's.
Not McDonald's.
Too strong. We discussed that earlier.
Too strong. See, he owned a coffee shop, so he's really picky now.
I am so picky.
So, that being said, thank you, Natasha, for pointing that out.
So is this the time that we could ask questions, or are we?
We're, um, we'll have the public hearing first.
Okay.
Okay. So is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of, uh, of this ordinance? Don't be shy. Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, is there any neutral party who would like to speak on behalf of this ordinance? Don't see anybody moving. Okay, is, are there, is there anyone who has any negative comments that they would like to make about this ordinance?
These people just assault.
Okay, that being said, we're going to close the public hearing part of this meeting and go on to the next item. And that is review of the design review ordinance. And could we have the ordinance read?
This is going to be painful.
Why do you have to do the whole thing with just that first page?
First and part of second. Okay. Weasor City Ordinance twelve seventy-three, an ordinance of the city of Weasor, Washington County, Idaho, enacting a new chapter six to Title II, Boards and Commissions, Weasor City Code, entitled Design Review Committee, setting forth the purpose, scope, appointment, and duties of a design review committee. Enacting a new section ten dash eight dash six to Title X, zoning regulations, Chapter Eight, B Residential District, medium density, single family, entitled, Design Review Requirements and Standards. Setting forth the requirement and standards of the design review committee for B Residential District, Medium Density, Single Family, en- enacting a new section ten dash nine dash six to Title X, zoning regulations, Chapter Nine, B One Residential District, Medium Density, Single Family, Agricultural, entitled, Design Review Requirements and Standards. Setting forth the requirement and standards of a design review committee for B One Residential District, Medium Density, Single Family, Agricultural, amending Title X, zoning regulation, Chapter Ten, Commercial District, Section Ten Dash Ten Dash Seven, Design Standards, City, Weasor City Code, setting forth the requirements and standards of the design review committee for commercial districts, amending Title X, zoning regulations, Chapter Thirteen, Planned Unit Developments, Section Ten Dash Thirteen Dash Five, Standards, Weasor City Code, setting forth the requirements and standards of a design review committee for planned unit developments, enacting a new section ten dash fifteen dash two to Title X, zoning regulations, Chapter Fifteen, Development Agreements, entitled, Design Review Requirements and Standards. Setting forth the requirement and standards of the design review committee for development agreements. Enacting a new section ten dash seventeen dash six to Title X, zoning regulations, Chapter Seventeen, D Industrial District, entitled, Design Review Requirements and Standards. Setting forth the, um, requirement and standards of the design review committee for the D Industrial District, enhancing, enacting a new chapter twenty to Title X, zoning regulations, Weasor City Code, entitled, Design Review. Setting forth the purpose, applicability, scope, procedures, requirements, standards, and appeal process for decisions of the design review committee, and providing that the ordinance be effective upon passage, approval, and publication according to the law. Be it ordained by the Mayor and City Council of the city of Weasor, Idaho, that Weasor City Code, Title II, is hereby amended to add a new chapter six, entitled, Design Review Committee, that Weasor City Code, Title X, Chapter Eight, is hereby amended to add a new section ten dash eight dash six, entitled, Design Review Requirements and Standards, that Weasor City Code, Title X, Chapter Nine, is hereby amended to add Section Ten Dash Nine Dash Six, entitled, Design Review Committee, that Title X, Chapter Ten, Section Ten Dash Ten Dash Seven be amended to read in its entirety as follows. That Title X, Chapter Thirteen, Section Ten Dash Thirteen Dash Five be amended to read as, in its entirety as follows. That Weasor City Code, Title X, Chapter Fifteen, is hereby amended to add new section ten dash fifteen dash two, entitled, Design Review Requirements and Standards. That Weasor City Code, Title X, Chapter Seventeen, is hereby amended to add a new section ten dash seventeen dash six, entitled, Design Review Requirements and Standards, and that Weasor City Code, Title X, is hereby amended to add Chapter Twenty, entitled, Design Review Committee.
I didn't quite follow. Would you repeat?
Play it back.
Thank you, Natasha. That was admirable.
Can I make the motion that we change? Do we need to wait for discussion before I?
No, you can make it ahead of time, and then all I'll have to read again is the second portion of that, not what we're changing.
Would you rather have a discussion now, or can I?
Whichever you want. I think she ought to read the whole thing again myself.
I can, I can. I'm good.
She's very capable of notes. Discussion first. Let's have discussion, discussion.
So Mayor, I've been couple, couple, actually more than a couple of questions. First of all, uh, it is obvious to me that this committee has gone to a ton of work. This is a very comprehensive deal. I, I can't imagine how many hours they have in it, and I've, I, you know, I do have some questions here. I don't want anybody to think I'm grilling anybody, but I want to acknowledge that, that they've done a, a great job in putting together a, a, a plan here for us to review. So, uh, but I, I do have a few questions because, because we've, we've only had this like three or four days, so.
No, I know a great one. Ask away.
Question number one is just kind of, uh, I guess it's a question about the, of how the process went to come about this, this agreement. What, was it, uh, you know, was there a genesis for this? Was, how, how did we?
We, so as a committee, we polled design review standards from almost fifteen other communities within the state of Idaho. And from those, we looked at similarities. We looked at, uh, who's in a similar position at population size, demographics, as far as what's, what's their major industries, uh, what does their town look like? Do they have historic places like that? And it seemed like, and in truth be told, that we spun our wheels sometimes because we would get excited over one of them and go, ooh, we could buy, steal this and use that. I love this idea. And then as we started to put it together, we realized that's not going to work. This, you know, because Weasor is very unique and our, our zonings are unique. But, so we used what others have invested time and money into to metamorphosis into what Weasor is using. And then I think there's one that probably we leaned on heavily towards the end that just seemed to tick most of the boxes. And I am forgetting it was a report.
NAPA.
Oh, it is NAPA. You're right, yeah. So NAPA's guidelines truly, I mean, for as big as NAPA is, their basic design reviews fit the best for a lot of what we're doing, and that city is very kind in, in letting us use what they've done. And so that's probably where we, what you see before you is NAPA adjusted for Weasor and then ideas stolen from other communities that we thought would fit Weasor better than what any one community had in tow.
So did we, so we, we took the information for the ordinance that they passed. Did we talk with them as well about how?
Constantly.
Okay, so.
Lots of communication.
Okay, to.
Yeah, things that.
Find out?
Yeah, we were asked what was working for them, what wasn't. What did people struggle with? What were their biggest pushbacks? Um, how did you deal with the what-ifs? Uh, and, and we had several what-ifs that we put before them, and all of them came back with answers. And, and I will be honest, Tony will know most of those, uh, Tony Edmonds, and he was the mastermind of communication because I still have my full-time job that I could not talk to city officials in the middle of. Yeah.
Do you, how does, so, uh, it, you know, for, for Weasor, if we're talking about, uh, competitive, uh, uh, places, places where if someone was wanting to start a business, they would consider, if they would consider us. And I'm thinking Payette Fruitland, Emmett, Dale, Nissau, Ontario. How does? How does, how does this plan compare to them? Does this give us an economic advantage, disadvantage, or neutral?
Well, I don't know what, how do I say this? What it provides for us is the, a very visible view that Weezer cares about its image, and wants those that are going to fit into the community. By demonstrating our care for the history we have, and wanting to align with that. As far as what, how we compare to Payette or Fruitland, they have very different guidelines, very different guidelines, and honestly, no guidelines in some cases, which is what we were trying to avoid. So I don't know if we did an economic impact study as far as what the color of a fence restriction might be, and how that will affect a company coming into town. I don't think that was part of our theories. I think we were interested in knowing what is the look that we want that can still benefit a business, that can still make them feel like they have the freedoms to create a business, but within the purview of what we feel fits Weezer.
Okay, so we didn't like run it by Sarita for their input or anything like that?
Not Sarita, no.
So?
Sarita, I feel focused is mainly on large industry, and that was not our focus. Our focus was small business, and what we can do for downtown Weezer. That's what our focus is.
Okay.
And if I could add something there. Towns that have adopted these types of policies don't tend to take and want for business, you know. Usually it's a sign of growth and of prosperity, and of being a place where you want to have a business.
Okay. Next question. Again, I'm sorry.
Larry, don't apologize. Firm questions, I'm ready.
So, we are, so every part of our building code, if I wanted to, you know, like the electrical, the plumbing, the size of the building on the lot, everything, including the design review, is administered through our city department, our building department. This one would appear to be the only one that then has a separate committee specifically for it. And I guess I'm concerned with creating too much bureaucracy, but I guess my question is, why can't design review be handled like every other part of a construction or remodel project with the building inspector and review by planning and zoning and the city council?
Well, I think all of those are still there. This is, this is an extra step, so I guess you, that is correct in thinking this might be an added complexity. The idea behind, and Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the idea behind the commission being one that's appointed by the mayor is to bring in the expertise outside of what the city can afford to pay, right? So the committee is made up of a historic preservationist, an agriculturalist, who is an expert in horticulture, a local business owner who knows what it's like to have a business in small-town Weezer, and then other vested members that, you know, some that have, one individual has a background in city planning. So the idea is that by bringing these experts together as an additional step, they can combine their expertise without taxing our staff, that we are already overtaxed, honestly. I think poor Dave Luce would lose his mind if he thought he had to do the design review amongst everything else, and bless that man. I don't want to add anything else to his place.
But as I was reading it, that's exactly what this does.
He'll have to enforce it, but only after the design review committee looks at it and approves it and says, yes, this is what you get to do. I mean, it becomes a checklist, if you will, for Dave, is my understanding.
Because I thought I read that the staff will, will tell the design review committee if it complies with our policy, and if not, how it does not comply, and then they will review, that's what I read in here. Is that not correct?
I wish I could say that I.
I wish I could find it again.
Because I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head. This has been, this has been adjusted by our lawyer, so he has updated the language to be more accurate for what he thinks is legally backupable.
Okay.
So if you can point to it, then I can, I can completely understand that.
Okay, on page six. It's 1020-5, Committee Review Procedure. Item B, it says, Staff Report at least one week prior to the review, before the design review committee staff shall repair, prepare and submit a staff report to the design review committee and the applicant. Staff report shall summarize the application and set forth which elements of the building meet design criteria and which elements do not. When preparing the staff report for an exception request, staff shall indicate that all other portions of the required code sections have been met and only outline items that affect the specific exception request.
And, so I guess my understanding of it, and I apologize if this is incorrect, but my understanding is B is really kind of in conjunction with A. So with step A, there's the design review committee, they will be scheduled in conjunction with the staff person, and there's a liaison, our lead design review person, who will work with Dave Luce to review, and then they will bring it to the committee, who will then go through it, those things that were in question, before it goes back. That was my understanding when we were putting this together, so.
We can make that clear.
Yeah, and we might want to try to clarify that language, yeah.
Okay.
So, just to give an example of what that would look like is, so before any major project, you might correct me if I'm wrong, there is a staff review of the project, like say before it goes to planning and zoning. So there is, all the staff that meet, kind of go over everything that is good about the project, bad about the project, what issues there seems to gonna be, and then it's brought to planning and zoning. So this would kind of be similar.
Same thing, yeah.
Is Dave would get together with the liaison, they would go over the project, and then once everything is kind of buttoned up and how they want it, then it goes to the design review committee, like it would go to planning and zoning.
Okay. And just one more comment about the expertise of the committee for design. We could say the same thing about the other aspects of the building, that it would be nice to have a separate committee with expertise in each area of building, like I said, you know, electric, plumbing, but we don't, we rely on our staff to do that.
So, Larry, is your preference that we, is your preference to just not have the committee, and that it be the staff that have to, is that what I'm hearing?
You know, I'm still deciding about that, but yes, I'm fearful that it slows down the process. That, you know, even with volunteers on the committee, it still costs money to have it. And, you know, we, you know, even on planning and zoning, we struggle to keep, you know, a full slate of commissioners, and this adds five or six more. In fact, my next question is about having a member of the city council as a member of the board, and.
We have that.
I understand that, but I'm wondering how wise that is, and I just, so, as a zoning chairman, I used to attend planning and zoning commission meetings, and it was determined that that's not a good idea, because I would, in the public hearing process.
Because later on, you would be voting on it.
I'd be voting on it, and I wonder if the same thing doesn't apply here.
You want to take a meeting off of my plate, Larry?
Well, I just don't.
That is the nicest Christmas gift I've ever given.
And we can take a look at it. The thing about it is on the, on the design review, is that there's an artistic element to it. And you get people who are interested in a certain look. And I don't think that our staff, we have that capability. And that's why we want to have a committee, because to take and give the different viewpoints, and give the different parts of the expertise that we don't have. We don't have anybody on staff that has historical expertise. We don't have anybody on staff who has botanical expertise. We don't have anybody on staff who has artistic expertise. And so this gives us a blend, yes, it is an extra step in the process, but I think in the long run, it's a value added.
So Larry, if I might, if it's a new construction business, like the ones out on six, when that would come in, we would just submit a copy to that committee to do what we call redline comments, they would redline what they see wrong and send it back, and come back fixed. So I don't, I don't think, as long as they do it before we do ours too, so that's how the way before we have our pre-construction or pre-design meeting or whatever like that, it would be done before then, I would hope. That way we go to submit itself and take it care of. I don't know that it would add any time to it as long as they meet within a timely manner. We only have so many, so much time between receiving those and setting up that meeting, so they'd have to be done within that timeline for that. Does that make sense? So we would submit a copy of the plans to them right away, as soon as we get them, as we do the departments, and we'd get their comments back, and then when we had the meeting, we would go to those comments and make sure they're changed before they come back to even planning and zoning. All the segments addressed, right up front.
Okay, so wouldn't, it'd be during the timeline, the staff would normally be hearing everything?
By law, it would have to be.
Maybe it's been very good on being when they needed to.
Yes, weekly, sometimes bi-weekly.
So when we had a new like that, Dave would get them a copy of these plans right away, and they'd only have, I think it's 14 days from the day we receive them,
Okay.
To have that done and redline back to us to turn it.
Okay.
And don't quote me out of date.
Okay. All right, on.
It's short on time.
On page three, Duties, Powers, and Responsibilities, it says, "The committee shall review projects greater than 2,000 square feet." What does that mean?
Building projects that are greater than 2,000 square feet will automatically go to the design review committee.
Okay, so it's building projects, should we, should we?
Well, I mean, I said building projects, but I think it's anything that's going to require a permit on something over 2,000 square feet. Correct, is that?
I just wonder.
Is that my lot size or my building size?
Yes, yeah.
What a question.
We might want to clarify that, because project didn't mean anything to me like that.
Because you could build a coffee shop that's very small and have it on a large lot and have no oversight. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yes, and.
Great clarification, I love it.
So.
So.
The auditor.
Clarify 2-6-4.
Yes.
2,000 what? Building plot. I love it, okay. Is that clarified in another section by being commercial though? A look, because that is.
I don't know, my eyes were going cross by the time I got done reading this.
Yeah, it is. Sometimes things like that are clarified in different sections, there's subsections. Yeah, I know.
I didn't notice when I read it, but I.
I'm sure I can find it, move on to your next question, I'm ready.
On page six. So, the design committee, I'm reading at item C, "The design committee shall be empowered to interpret design standards and to make exceptions to standards. Provided such exceptions shall not allow variance to other non-designed standards." Blah, blah, blah. So, in reading through this, the powers of the committee appear to me to be pretty subjective, which is different than every other part of our building code. So, I'm wondering, how do we, does this open us up to suit if we don't have some kind of standard by which, which we allow exceptions? It's like, you know, somebody's gonna, you know, if we say yes to somebody on, I don't know, on the color of their fence or something, do we then, do we then have to say that color of fences is okay for everybody? Or is this different, because the, you know, like I said, our other, our other building codes, is pretty straightforward as to what can, you can do, what you can do with, you know, by exception or conditional use, where this is, is, what is it, more subjective?
Again, great question, and so the language was written, we hoped and tried to be enough in clarity that we could make those decisions without it being too subjective, right? So, for example, when it talks about colors, we don't say what colors are allowed, we tell you what colors aren't allowed, because it's easier to draw the line, right? Saying that you can't have a solid, a bright neon green building in the middle of downtown. So, and I think it's literally neon colors and something else. So we did think about that, in trying to understand how would this be enforceable, what is something that is actually reasonable for Weezer? So, what is allowed in one, you know, it should be allowed for all, and we understand that, because that's the best way, you can't enforce it if it's too subjective like that color. Wow, sorry Herb, we allowed it over there, so we're gonna, you know, like it's. We did, the language is written in a way that it is enforceable. Does that, is that gonna stop someone from potentially suing us? No, this is America.
Right, okay, so, but we think, we've tried to take that into consideration.
Yes, yeah. Which is why we had the lawyer review it, right? It's, this is his language, he's gone through and taken ours, and he has adjusted it to his verbiage. So I love your questions, because they do help, they are things that we're going, oh yeah, well that didn't pop out to us with his review. So, you know, if there's more, I would love for us to get clarification, and how can we clarify it on there? But what he has clarified for us here is what he feels is enforceable for us as a city.
Okay. Okay, on page eight. 1020-8, Permit Declaration, because this ordinance includes residential development. It says the permit is valid for a period not to exceed two years with an extension. Extension for six months. What I worry about, I, what if the project takes longer than that? I'm thinking about on the west side of town here, that's like a, what, a four or five-phase development? You know, it's likely that that total project will, will take longer than two years. Is, is there some provision for that, or do we need a new permit for each phase?
We could do that by development agreement.
Yeah, I think that's the idea, is that through the development agreement, we're still protected.
Okay.
Yeah.
Almost done, sorry folks.
What's that?
There are three more.
Three more bridges. You're good, this is great. We have an audience, so let's just entertain.
Okay, I guess if you look on page nine, Design Standards and Requirements, I put down here many questions, but if you, if you wanted to put it in the synopsis, it's like, I don't really get all this stuff.
Hence the experts on the committee are able to tell us what this does, why it's important, and how. Hence the experts on the committee are able to tell us what this does, why it's important and how it plays into the design review. I mean, that's, that's truly the benefit of having those experts on the committee. Because they're able to look at that and go, oh yeah, no, 25% blazing.
Yeah, I don't even know what blazing is. Okay, so, but what I would like to know is, is, yeah, is does enforcement of this ordinance is complying with these things? Is it gonna cost more than if we didn't have it?
Cost who more?
Cost the, the builder, the owner?
Our intent was not to cost them more, but to help guide them in things that would make them feel like they fit within Weezer. So you'll see a number of them, I mean, the only thing where it might be potentially cost more is, for example, a sheet metal building. Where we require that only a certain percentage of the building could be used as that material. Otherwise it needs to have additional material for aesthetic and also just to fit in with the environment more. That's an example of, of a restriction that's in there. Not the intent, but also, we also feel like if there's a big business trying to come in, this is what we, this is what Weezer looks like. This is what we expect you to do if you want to be a part of our community. As far as like buildings that are already in place, and let's say there's a small business that's wanting to update their look, those kinds of exceptions are in there. We've, we've accounted for those and, and it's again, you know, the colors can't be this, but you have a whole other list of things. Now, if you're looking at signage, well signage can only be this size, you know, no bigger than some percentage of the front of the facade of your building. That kind of a thing. So I, I don't think it will, but I, I'm not, I don't know. To answer your question Larry, I don't know.
But that wasn't in the intent?
Not the intent, yeah.
What, was it, was it discussed?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
But, but that's again, why we, the language that is chosen is to be open enough to allow someone to have choices and to really feel proud of their building, but it not be a neon disco club downtown with all sorts of colors. And LED lights that flash in your face in the middle of the night.
We, we don't want everything.
There you go. Okay. Okay, last question. Page 13. Okay, recreational areas. And it's a part like if you have a, put a duplex in or if you have a residential subdivision, you, you have to have what it calls a recreational area. I guess I'm just curious here. Those recreational areas include wetland or wildlife habitats, other landscape features to design mimic natural spaces, natural areas that have water features, forested areas, wetlands and other natural land form. Landscapes may be considered qualified open space. Access to at least 50% of the perimeter of the natural area must be provided by ADA accessible pathways.
What does that mean?
Yeah, is that like going too far?
Well, we didn't think so. So to, to explain the reasoning behind that, so let's say a large apartment complex decides to come in and they want to build apartments. We know that there has to be multi-use spaces, recreational space available. The design reviews committee idea was that we wanted those spaces to be purposeful and ones that the community that they've built for can actually enjoy and not an afterthought that we've shoved into a far corner that a wheelchair person can't access, that doesn't fit in. It's just, oh, by the way, we have to have this, so here's 100 square feet of green grass over there, go play. We wanted it to be purposeful, like it was meant to be an important part of our, our community. Our comp plan talks about the community wanting to have our natural spaces easily accessible and usable. And so we thought it was a viable option to make sure that in our, our design review plan that we showed that that's important. That if a, a company wants to come in and build large housing complexes, okay, this is important to the community. It's expected to be in your design review. So that's why we felt it was okay to kind of put those kinds of stipulations in there.
Okay, and so basically to give people more options of what's okay, is that?
Yeah, I mean, to give them more direction on what is, so it, it does list, you know, what could be considered open recreational. So it could be a water feature if they want, doesn't have to be. But, but the basic idea is that it needs to be purposeful, accessible and one that is something that beautifies the area following those requirements and not just a random.
So it doesn't have to be a, doesn't have to be a swing set for kids to play on?
Yeah, no, does not have to.
And is it, is it, does our code right now, does it, it require those, those open spaces in?
It does require the open spaces.
So all this is doing is
Making sure it's accessible.
Yes, making sure you can get, get to them and, and giving more guidelines. So we're not adding an extra burden to, to a developer or a, you know, a prospective owner of multifamily housing.
I think we felt like we were trying to protect our patrons, the citizens, by making sure that the space is usable and something of interest, not forgotten space, I guess is the best way to term that.
Some, you know, I've seen subdivisions before where they have to have, you know, so much open space. And that ends up being the drain field for the streets.
Right.
Right. Grass about that tall.
With grass about that tall, they can use it and so on. And so this, this makes it more purposeful and meaningful.
Yeah.
My, my assumption would be that if we're working with a business that's coming in and they read this and, and it is overwhelming, like I'm not a business owner. I, I've worked for a company. But if I was gonna bring in a business, I would look at this and I would, I would feel overwhelmed. However, I know that Weezer is a type of place and I think that we want to make sure that we continue to be the type of place that if I said, well, this is what I want it to look like and this is my vision, that someone could say, yep, that checks the box here, 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 here. That doesn't quite go if you did this instead. And so as long as there's that cooperation, I, I think we would be okay with it.
And, and none of our guidelines are out of the lab, for lack of a better term. It is something that any design committee or any design firm who's gonna be creating the plots and the, and the design plans, they know how to work through this. This is again, not even that restrictive. Some of the ones we looked at are incredibly restrictive. You know, McCall allows you to have six colors, that's it. You have to have a specific roofing material. You're not allowed to have anything different. Your sign has to be, like it is so restrictive and we did not want to go that direction because we knew that wouldn't be feasible for our town. So.
So in terms of complexity or restrictiveness, on a scale of one to five, what is this?
Well, we're, we gotta raise the bar, so we're raising the bar a little bit here. We're probably at a, I don't know, six and a half, seven, six.
Or 10?
At a 10, yeah. Yeah. Room to raise the bar later if we absolutely have to. For example, if we do a historic district later on. Hinted. Yeah, I, I would say it's about a six and a half, maybe a seven. Our town will probably feel like it's a 10, but it's not, I promise you it's not.
Any other questions or comments?
So just, just one other thing Larry. So what you gotta remember is this is not gonna be in one section of the code book. This is outlining what the design review committee is and then what it is going to be doing. So this is several different sections of what is gonna be in code.
There's 40 sections that are
Yeah, so this is not gonna be just a one section of it. Yes, this looks overwhelming, but it's just because it's new. This will be dispersed throughout our codes.
Like Sterling said, someone who is making up the plans for businesses, this is a
Yeah, no, this is pretty straightforward.
Okay, I just thought of one more. So your committee's been reviewing, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Three questions a day Larry.
So you've been reviewing applications now, you know?
We could be, is that what you're asking?
No, or, did you say you've, you've been
We have, so not in an official capacity though, right?
Right.
So if the buildings that, the development plans that have come to us have been as a request from the city to consider. This moves it from, oh, this would be a really good idea and if you want to play nice, we hope that you'll follow these things that we would like to see into a, no, actually, these are the limits that you need to follow. This is what we're expecting to see in your development plan, work, work out what you need to do. So we were very lucky that Maverick was willing to adjust for us, that, that Walgreens was willing to adjust for us, that, what's this automotive one?
O'Reilly's?
O'Reilly's was willing to adjust some things for us.
So if we had anybody that says, you know, too bad Charlie?
I say Payette has plenty of opportunity.
I mean, but of the ones we've reviewed and made suggestions, has, has that, has it been a problem?
The only time it's a problem is if it's too late in the process, which is where some of the frustrations came from, is why we're trying to get at the early start of the planning so that we make sure we're able to make those recommendations early enough that it's not a problem. The, the few times it has been a problem is, oh, well, we've already submitted our plans, they were reviewed, we're not, we're not gonna change them now. So that's, that's the only time it's been an issue.
Okay, so you don't think it's, it's, I just want to be satisfied in my own mind.
I want you to be satisfied as well Larry.
Hindrance to, to, you know, to progress to, you know, it's, you know, because we still want our, our community to get better and get have more things available, more services, more, more products. I, I don't want this to be, I don't want us to be competing with Payette for a grocery store or something and have them choose Payette because our design review is too restrictive. Are you comfortable that at least up till now, that has not been the case?
Absolutely. I don't think it's been the case at all.
And Larry, you know me, you know, I have the same background you do. And, no, it has, I haven't seen that. The, and I have to say that the times that it's gotten too, too late has been my fault. And so, you know, we've all been learning a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
As we went along.
Very accurate.
But actually the cooperation of businesses, if we got it too soon enough, has been really good.
Yeah. Oftentimes they, truth be told, oftentimes they appreciate the guidance because then it feels like they're able to make those choices without doing guesswork. But it also helps them understand where our priorities are as a community. And so like Maverick was actually quite grateful and said, oh, thank you. No, actually, this is great. And their adjustment to the landscaping, I think was an improvement and it wasn't a financial burden on them. It was, but it was an improvement and I think it looked great.
Because, because they want to fit into the community too.
Yeah.
They want, they want to present a good image.
And they also want the next building or the next business that comes in to have the same restrictions because it protects them. You know, you, you don't get a building in the middle of town that, that doesn't meet the code. Is it deterrent to people coming through? I, I like it as a protection code for the existing building, the existing businesses that are willing to comply.
Okay, so do, there, there are a couple of things that we're gonna, as we went through my checklist that we're gonna check into. Do we need to, to fix them before acting on it or?
I think we, they weren't prohibitive to where we couldn't take and make a motion to accept this with, with changes.
Okay. Then what do we just?
Clarifications.
We review those changes then like next month or whenever, right?
Exactly.
They're done.
Exactly. And if we need to change the wording, we can do that.
Well, I'm gonna motion that we suspend the rules and change so we don't have to listen to, or Natasha read that entire thing one more time and put our audience to sleep. You have to do it anyway?
Yeah.
Quietly.
Because so
Oh, because you usually have to do it three times?
Yeah, so this states that the above and foregoing is in full and true and correct. So, let's go, I got this.
Okay. Are you ready for me to make my motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 1273 on to the third and final reading by title only.
May I second the motion?
Can you move and second it? We have a roll call please.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Von Bradhorst?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Last one, here we go. Settle in.
I, Natasha McDaniel, City Clerk of the City of Weezer, Idaho, do hereby certify that the above and foregoing is in full, is a full, true and correct copy of the ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Weezer, Washington, City of Weezer, Washington County, Idaho, Enacting a New Chapter Six to Title Two, Boards and Commissions at Weezer City Code, entitled Design Review Committee Setting forth the Purpose, Scope, Appointment and Duties of a Design Review Committee Enacting a New Section 10-8-6 to Title 10, Zoning Regulations, Chapter Eight, B Residential District, Medium Density, Single Family, Entitled Design Review Requirements and Standards, Setting forth the requirement and standards of the Design Review Committee for B Residential District, Medium Density, Single Family, In, enacting a new Section 10-9-6 to Title 10, Zoning Regulations, Chapter Nine, B1 Residential District, Medium Density, Single Family, Agricultural, Entitled Design Review Requirements and Standards, Setting forth the requirement and standards of the Design Review Committee for B1 Residential District, Medium Density, Single Family, Agricultural, Amending Title 10, Zoning Regulations, Chapter 10, Commercial District, Section 10-10-7, Design Standards, Weezer City Code, Setting forth the requirements and standards of the Design Review Committee for Commercial, Commercial Districts, Amending Title 10, Zoning Regulations, Chapter 13, Planned Unit Developments, Section 10-13-5, Standards. Weezer City Code, Setting forth the requirements and standards of the Design Review Committee for Planned Unit Developments, Enacting a New Section 10-15-2 to Title 10, Zoning Regulations, Chapter 15, Development Agreements, Entitled Design Review Requirements and Standards, Setting forth the requirements and standards of the Design Review Committee for the Development Agreements, Enhancing a New Section 10-17-6 to Title 10, Zoning Regulations, Chapter 17, D Industrial District, Entitled Design Review Requirements and Standards, Setting forth the requirement and standards of the Design Review Committee for the D Industrial District, Enhancing a New Chapter 20 to Title 10, Zoning Regulations, Weezer City Code, Entitled Design Review, Setting forth the purpose
Applicability?
Applicability, scope procedures, requirement standards and appeal process for decisions of the Design Review Committee and providing that the ordinance be in effect upon its passes, approval and publication according to law.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So
Make the motion.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
I feel like I'm, I'd be in the wrong and I'd make a motion.
Well, you did all the work you should do.
I've pet project for three years.
You did all the work you should do.
Well, Mr. Mayor, then I motion that we accept ordinance, uh, design review ordinance 1273 with, excuse me, with clarifications that will be here next week.
Next month.
Next month, I mean.
Yes.
Not next week, next month.
I second that motion.
Can you move and second it? Could we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Von Bradhorst?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Do tell the committee, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Appreciate it.
Three thank yous from the mayor.
Okay, next up, we're going to have a public hearing on Parker and Parker Development Agreement. This is a development agreement for recreational, or RV park on the west side of town that we have, or south side of town. Uh, yes. Where we had development agreements a couple of years ago and they want to amend that. Where we had development agreements a couple of years ago, and they want to amend that. And so, would the Parker, Parker people come forward and make their presentation?
Good evening, Mayor Hibbard, councilmembers and members of the public. My name is Jamie Parker. Do you do any of my address and the whole deal again? Okay, five seven three nine West River three, Meridian, Idaho. Thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to keep this short and sweet. I'm here to request a DA modification for the Parker properties, DA that we have in place. The request specifically is to remove section three point five, the seasonal use restriction, based on the implementation of the proposed flood monitoring and evacuation plan. So I have one copy, I trust you all have seen those copies as well, and had a chance to read through that. The main reason for this request is that twenty-one out of forty-seven historical crests that have happened on the Weezer River happen outside of the seasonal use restriction, which is currently December through February. That data was provided to the city staff and, you know, showing those dates, almost fifty percent of those dates have, happen outside that window. The implementation of this flood monitoring and mitigation and evacuation plan is going to be required regardless of the seasonal use restriction. So lifting this restriction will just help the park operations and business overall throughout the year, rather than just nine months out of the year. That's the basis of the request for the DA modification. In addition to that, based on the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing last month, I did agree to that the DA modification would also be subject to some of the rules in the new design review ordinance that we've been discussing, specifically the finishes on building materials, monument installation and fencing materials. Based on what I heard tonight, I would say the exception would be the ADA requirements in the amenity areas, because we have our civil drawings already approved. That was a major feat of eighteen months, they got approved last October. So I request that, that specific section of the DA, or the develop, design review ordinance now be applicable to this DA.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments, or any public comments in favor of this? Come on, come on. Any neutral comments? Any negative comments? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing portion of this meeting and go into discussion on the amendments to the development agreement. Now that, if I understand right, Mike, the reason why the months chosen for closing the park were because during the, the hard winter months, ice jams could form in the river and it can flood without notice, whereas in the spring, there, we have time to react?
There's a lot more monitoring time in the spring, yes, you have a lot there. So, in the winter, in the colder parts of winter, December, January, February, where that was at, the, the issue was, is most of those flood times then are caused by ice jamming, which have a very, very short, if any, warning sign, right? You don't know when they're gonna happen, sun breaks free, floods very quickly. This, the springtime ones, we, we have a lot more monitoring time, we can see the rivers rising, we have weather reports. There is more time to realize that there could be flooding. We can see the river started raising even in mid-val and start to predict times to get here. That was the concern at the time, was ice jamming.
Also, the concern with, part of the concern with having the park closed for a certain portion of the year was to prevent people from becoming long-term residents. The city has an ordinance that you can only be in an RV for six months in the city. And so, that's part of it.
Yeah, and that ordinance would still be in place here.
The state even has a, a law given.
It's a little bit more difficult to enforce, because we don't monitor.
So will you have any time limits on visitors to your RV park?
Mr. Parker, we have some questions.
I forgot to stand for question, but it ended my last moment, but yeah. To answer your question, Councilmember Hahn, yes, we would comply with the city ordinance of the six-month policy in one spot.
So would they be allowed to skirt their trailer while they're there then?
No skirting at all is allowed. Correct. Yeah, no skirting.
I didn't quite understand your sewer, you said you're not gonna tie in to Maverick, but where is your sewer gonna go?
Oh, yeah, so we, on our approved civil drawings, we have a dedicated sewer service that ties into a new manhole we'll be installing at the intersection of Highway ninety-five and Commercial Avenue. A new manhole being installed, and our sewer service ties into that.
I'd have some questions for you, but I used all mine already.
Your notification system, say there's an ice jam or there's a flood coming, I'm not really that techy on exactly how you do a multiple notification. I suppose you'll have everybody's cellphone on record tied into some kind of a system?
Yeah, correct, yeah. So for the initial, up to twenty-four hours, you know, we committed to twenty-four hours going and doing a walk by, set by site for notifications of, that a flood is coming. But, yeah, everything up to that for the forty-eight hour to advance notification and the, once it hits nine point five feet, that, that would all be through text message. Everyone has to, yeah, when you register, you have to have a, they are given the flood monitoring as part of the check-in during the flood season, which is December, I believe, I think it was through April thirtieth, they're given the, the notification of what could happen, and they're required to have a cellphone number as well.
Thank you.
So this, this evacuation plan, that's something you've negotiated with staff here, is that correct, or they've at least bought off on it?
Yeah, it was presented to, yeah, Dave Luce as a draft copy, requested for open comments. I expected some back and forth, staff had no comments. So I, it's still open for comments, if, if there is anything before we officially publish it, and it becomes a part of the DA, of course, so.
Because I, I still do have concern on ice jams, you have less than an hour. The last one was about forty-five minutes to water in that field.
To water in the field.
The ice alarm, the level alarm went off at like fifteen feet, and within, that was the ice backed up to the monitor, and maybe you had an hour?
The city has a monitor at the ice, at the rail bridge?
No, they have, the closest one is closer to Unity Bridge, if I'm not mistaken, right there, Unity, that alarm went off, the ice was coming down the river, and once it sets it off, you, like I said, within an hour of that, calling an alarm, which notifies probably the same USGSU who'd have.
Yeah.
It was an hour later, there was water in Ollie's parking lot, actually, right there at the back of the bar, so that puts that site under significantly.
Gotcha.
There is not a lot of time in an ice jam, it jams right there at the train bridge, and.
Rail bridge.
You're flooding within, like I said, very short period of time. Just understood.
Yeah.
How many units do you project?
Uh, there are a hundred and thirty units on the segment.
So my question is actually for an officer, not for, for you, Officer Murray. Maybe you can answer it, but I think I want to ask Officer Troy.
Okay.
Officer Cron.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, Lieutenant Cron, please, please, for me.
So Lieutenant, I've, I've been on some drive, not drive, I, I've been on some ride-alongs, and I, I have seen the fears that we have with trailer parks firsthand from a, a safety standpoint. So have you guys had the opportunity to look at the layout of this, and do you have any concerns with a hundred and thirty spaces and your ability to access and get to where trouble might be? Or is that not something we have to worry about?
No, we haven't had the police department looked at that. However, you are right, sometimes those kind of parks can bring us additional concerns and troubles. The newer parks that are going in, we're not really seeing that.
Okay, good.
But we haven't seen the plans as far as accessibility to respond to emergencies yet.
Okay. So now I have a question for you. Thank you, thank you, Lieutenant, I appreciate it. Okay, so, Mr. Parker, with your access points, what is, do you have a contingency plan, or would there be a plan in place to allow emergency units to be able to get in there? Because they are pretty tight, I don't know that fire trucks are gonna get anywhere close, but at least the police officer, I'm curious, what are your, what are your plans?
Sure. The roads were designed with, with the typical fire access radius points, all kinds of angles and all that stuff. So yes, fire, fire can access at any point in time. I'm having a hard time, specific to police accessing, I'm having a hard time understanding when they wouldn't be able to access the site.
Not just as easy, easy enough to get there without it being a convoluted pathway to get to there in an, in an emergency?
Yeah, so the, well, yeah.
The plan, so the plan is scanned in, and it's not, you know, black and white scans are not always the perfect image of going, so which, where do they get in?
Yeah.
How do they get there?
I don't, I don't, in front of me, but I do have to comment that the fire department looked at this extensively in fire hydrant placement, and we went through fire flows and the size of lines that had to be there and everything.
And they're all good.
For fire, yes, of course.
Of course.
Fire, fire chief has time signed off on it, you know.
Okay, so, just a point of clarification here, the development plan has, has been approved, is that correct?
And is recorded.
And is recorded, and so the only thing that we're really considering here tonight is the evacuation plan in place of the, what the?
The three-month closure.
The three-month closure.
Right.
Okay. And, sorry, I guess I'd feel better about this if, if our, you know, our, whatever departments need to, you know, you know, our fire and, and police and whatever else department need to review this, this plan, have, have had a chance to have their input on it, because they're, they're the ones who have to, to enforce it, although the applicant had said he, he provided a copy to, to our building department, correct?
Uh, planning staff, Dave Luce.
Like I said, I'd feel better about, I, I don't feel qualified to say, yes, this is okay without, without a little more input from, you know, from our staff who has to have to deal with it.
So it, just so, it's on the table, this has gone to Dave Luce, this has gone to planning and zoning, and they have recommended a favorable.
Yeah.
Okay, but has it been to like the, this change, has it been to our fire department, has it been to, I mean, if, if we have to evacuate that place, who's involved? And have they looked at it, and are they okay with it?
Yeah, so specifically, even in the evacuation plan, there was a request for Weezer PD to do a lap for any non-compliant residents, or tenants, or patrons, if you will, to, to help with that evacuation process. I did expect that that would be distributed throughout city staff, perhaps to the police chief on staff as well, but I don't know that that happened, but I, I want it to happen, yes, is what I'm saying, so, because of that component asking for this.
Yeah, I don't have, if it, if it works for the people who have to deal with the situation at the city, I guess I, I don't have a, a big problem with it, but I want to make sure of that, before we, you know, put an okay on it.
Would, would this substantially delay your plans if we put this off for a month and had it reviewed by the fire department and the police department?
Uh, no, wouldn't. So, it, no, there's no, we still have to go through the whole construction process, but knowing what the pulse is of council is good, so.
I think safety is just always our, our major concern, you know, and, and the particular challenges of this space, you are well aware of, is right smack dab in a FEMA flood zone. So it's always been a, a difficult apprehension for us to go, oh, we want someone to invest in the land that we know has flooded before and could flood again. So it's, I hope it's not viewed as, as though we aren't supportive, it's that we want your money to be spent wisely, and that we have a plan to keep people safe, like that's our, that's our priority.
Yep, I'm sure. Yeah, I, I expected back and forth on the, on the flood monitoring and evacuation plan prior to this meeting, but if this is the catalyst that initiates that, that's great, let's do it.
Would you be a motion to table this for now?
Yeah, so I'm moving up, I'm making a motion that we'll table this until the June meeting to give fire and police a chance to review, approve, and approve. Second?
Can you move and second it all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And thank you, and we are looking forward to seeing your development plans.
Thanks, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
He might give everybody a chance.
He's turning it up, I'm on it here.
Thank you for the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts being here tonight.
We appreciate it.
No, we're turning the air off.
Riveting session, thank you.
I'm dying.
Consider those dog park area on County Harbor, and Josh, your word up?
Okay. So, real quick, I will pull up the area that we are talking about. So this is off of Park Street, the soccer complex, you do drive all the way down the east side of the soccer complex, where the very north portion of the property that is owned by the city that is now the soccer complex, is the area in question. It'll be, I think it's three hundred by eighty, Mike, area, so that's the area, and this is what it would look like. So I'm just gonna kind of read a presentation that was given to me, and then you guys can discuss. Dog parks provide a safe opportunity for dogs to get fresh air and exercise off-leash. Letting your dog run and chase a ball or frisbee helps them release pent-up energy and relieves boredom. A visit to the dog park can be beneficial for both dog and owner, as it provides an opportunity for both to socialize. Sandy, I, I, if I'm saying it wrong, I'm sorry, Mark Witz, Jim Felton, Ben and Teresa Thompson, Patrick Naumann and Gina Clark have been working to find a location and acquire a lower grant to establish a dog park in Weezer. We are excited to have been granted preliminary approval by the City of Weezer to put this dog park on the north end of the soccer complex on Park Street, and to submit our vision for approval. The dog park would be three hundred and nine feet long and eighty feet wide. It would have an eight-foot gate for a riding lawnmower to go through, and double gate system for pets and owners to safely go in and out off-leash. Our vision for the dog parks includes a sales shade on the end, close to the parking lot with a bench or two, perhaps a pea gravel or concrete with a water station for both owner and dog. We are in the process of acquiring a used fire hydrant from, from the fire department for the dogs, and checking with the four-H club to help with the few agility items. We will have multiple pet waste stations with trash cans. The space is large enough, so many of, so much of the space could be used for throwing balls, frisbees, and a smaller section near the front to be utilized for more laid-back dog activities. We believe the cost prohibit, cost prohibits us from building two dog parks, one for smaller dogs and one for larger dogs. However, we think an area could be fenced off for smaller dogs later if it is needed, and we, we can find the funding. We will have, we will have signage covering rules and restrictions and liability waiver. We would match the current fencing, and the fencing contract will walk the property with Ron McDaniel and our group before final estimate and hiring. I have been working with Jim Huff with the Lower Foundation, and she has stated that she has had feedback from the Weezer community that a dog park is needed and wanted by many, and she is very much behind helping us acquire a grant approval to fund it. We believe we will have some great community partnerships involved with this dog park, such as the Weezer River Animal Shelter and Rescue, who will accept the grant on our behalf, and the four-H Dog Club. And we will, and we all intend to keep an eye on the park, clean up where, see, we see it needs, and report to the city any issues which need to be resolved. We estimate this project will cost between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars. We believe this will be a great community asset, and hope we receive your approval to proceed. Thank you, Sandy. Oh, well, there you go, we have fire hydrants.
Are you even amused though?
So then there was kind of just a rundown of what the project was, consists of, the materials needed. Really, the decision that needs to be made tonight by the council is whether the city is willing to allow this area to be used and fenced off as a dog park. Everything else will kind of move forward from there.
This, we have checked with the recreation department, this won't interfere with the soccer complex at all.
How does this affect our mowing contracts?
So, that is why the eight-foot gate will be put in. So what we were looking for is a place where little to no changes to maintenance and care would be needed. So if you look on the top portion of the picture, there'll be an eight-foot gate for the lawnmower. So basically, whenever our contracted lawnmower, the day he's going to mow, he's just going to get, open the gate, he can mow like normal, he won't have to, there won't be, there might be a little bit more weed eating that has to be done, but other than that, that area already is irrigated, there's already lines in the ground, there are, they come on at night. So there will be no, will be no additional upkeep that needs to be done to the property other than, who?
And the fencing won't affect the irrigation event? It's not going to affect the sprinkler lines or anything?
No.
Okay.
This was chosen with that in mind?
It's already irrigated.
So, one point I want to make is, that drawing is a little deceiving. We're talking about an area about the size of a football field.
Larry, it's a carton.
Well, I know, but I mean, to draw it to scale, 309 yards is, is the length of a football field. I don't remember what the width is, but it's 80 feet, it's not far off.
So just, just south of this...
Yeah, 120 by 180.
This area is a full soccer field, sitting the same length as this, the 300 feet, is a whole soccer field, so that's probably not.
And that space isn't really used for much right now, other than people maybe hang out there a bit.
Okay, so are there like any special rules for a, a, a dog park that, that we don't have since we don't have one?
No, I think the, the biggest thing that you're going to find is now that you have an area that is designated for your dogs to be off-leash, I think the only other thing that would, we would need to do is enforce our leash laws in other parks.
I would say that this is very, well, this is a very good plan and I would just applaud anything that gets the dog poop out of Memorial Park and up at the high school on all their fields. So if this is what does that, then let's go.
Don't over allow the clap.
It'll be much easier to enforce the leash law when you tell people, this is where you need to run your dogs.
Yeah. Is, do we have issues, any issues of parking?
No, so on the east side of the area, that is all already parking, and there's plenty of parking there.
It's been a while since I've had a soccer kickoff, little.
Yeah, so just, just on the southeast corner of this, just south on that, that green property line that you can see, there is the gate to get into the soccer complex right there. So this would just be, I mean, it would just kind of coincide with that one.
Okay.
And then liability?
So I, I believe as long as we have clear indication on our signage, we're basically posting that bring your dog in at your own risk. It is, you know, property, property, pet owner's responsibility to control their animal and/or take responsibility if anything does happen.
Which I think is what most dog parks like in Boise, where I didn't have, big old, yeah, big old sign, lots of words.
So I, I think it's a great plan. I think they've really kind of thought of everything. We will, so on the very east side of the property where the road comes in is where the wa, the water line is, the main line. So we would tap into there and then come across, Mike, where do we come across, the north part of that parking lot?
Wherever's best suited, that line runs the whole thing, so I don't think it's going to make a difference where, wherever's best suited for water.
That triggers water to that building.
Yeah.
So from that building, e, or westward?
I, I, like I said, I don't think there's enough variance in that, wherever's best suited for the water station that could go, but not a whole lot of work.
Yeah.
Not a lot, you're not going to add anything.
I don't know if anyone can see my mouth. So even if the water came in here, because this is the entrance here. Look at me go, look. So he brought the water in over here, you could put the water station over there. The water station that we're looking at, we're actually looking into another grant for water fill stations around town. There will be the water bottle fill stations, the fountain, and then the pit.
Nice.
One on the bottom, so.
Yeah, there is a dry patch, correct?
We're trying to figure out that house.
It's a park.
Playground.
It's the playground that's there.
Clearly, I don't miss soccer.
That's just an abandoned, well, it's not abandoned, it's just a, a building.
It's a storage.
Can you, can you zoom out a little further? I'm just looking for, so is that close to the end of the city limits?
Yeah, city limits are right here.
Yep. And so property to the north of that, where those buildings are, that's in the city limits?
That's right here, that's the city's property right now, so this used to be the old fire training grounds.
Oh, so we own that?
We own all this, yeah, we own around the canal.
Neighbor to bother it, it's us.
Yes, and right here, there's no structures until you get to this end of the property, and then on this end of the property, there's no, the house is clear down here. So you'd, you'd have significant different distance between, there wouldn't be like a house sitting right here that's going to hear the dogs barking. I mean, you'd have hours of operations just like you did any other park.
Sure.
There's a buffer there.
Yeah, so there, there's no structure that would be directly affected by a barking dog.
Love it.
There's a kennel quarter mile to the west of there anyhow, there's dogs.
They, yeah, they probably wouldn't bother them, right?
Good. Well, this is enough for the discussion, I propose that we accept the dog area on city property.
Second, good motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're one for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yes.
Want to make your meeting a little smaller?
Dirty Burger, Beer and Wine application, and Mr. Lieutenant Cron, would you mind coming forward and giving us your opinion?
The police department doesn't have any issues with this. It's pretty cut and dry.
They want to serve more alcohol.
Well, it's been that way for quite some time.
I was going to say, isn't this the same as, for owners?
Legends, printed iron.
Same thing.
And checked out the owners?
We, we need a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Or owners.
Yeah, the owner's a corporation, the people managing it, there's no issues with it.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve this application to the city of Weezer for license to sell.
Beer and wine. Beer and wine.
Beer and wine.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Next on the agenda is to consider appointing Jim Tracy to the airport board. And recently, there was an opening on the airport board and the board nominated this person with unanimous vote and, Larry, would you mind coming forward and giving your name and address and telling us about this?
My name is Larry Boots and for some years now, I've been the chairman of the airport advisory board. And during the time I've been chairman, I've seen people that have tried to get on the board, wanted to get on the board, and all they're looking for is their own agenda. And what I look for is someone who will be of benefit to the airport and not just themselves. And I recognize that in Jim Tracy, and I talked about it with the airport manager, Jim Metzger, and he agreed with me. So I approached Jim and asked him if he would consider it, and his response was it would be an honor. So I am recommending him for the board. This is Jim, right? The next Air Force pilot, he's the next airline pilot, he's got a lot of experience and I think he'd be an asset to the board.
Thank you.
I mentioned our last airport meeting as well, and a stand-up guy, I could tell, has that personality, you can trust quite quickly, so.
Tracy, do you know what you're getting yourself into?
We don't tell him not to lay down. I would like to say, I've been in aviation a long time, since age seventeen, since seventeen and then Mr. Mayor and council members, I would like to say, oh, my name is Jim Tracy.
And your address?
My address?
Yes, please.
I'm currently in Parma, Idaho. Not a resident, but I hope to be. But of all the 50, 55 years of flying, I've been to a lot of airports, built multiple hangars, built my own airplanes. And I, I just seriously have to say that under the leadership of Jim and Larry, it is the finest airport I've ever been to. I really think you really have a real gem here. And look, look forward to offering any help I can, but I, I wanted you to really be aware of, the airport is truly special to the aviators that understand a well-managed FBO operation. I took my hat again to Jim, he's just above and beyond.
We're, we're very fortunate we realize. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we, thank you for your service, especially being at United States Airport.
Oh, thank you.
Mayor, I motion that we appoint, or accept the appointing of Jim Tracy to the airport board. Call second.
Been moved in second, can we have, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, General.
Well.
Next up on the...
I'll give you that 20 buck for me.
Give me just a second.
Okay.
Next is, consider available water supply at the airport.
Now, I'm, sorry, I'll try to be brief based on the hour to begin here, so. My name is Jim Metzger, I'm a manager, you want my address also?
Uh, yes, please.
2191 North River Road, Payette, Idaho, 83661. And I'm the manager of the Weezer Airport. And I want to thank commission member and Mr. Mayor for hearing this, it's getting late and I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear. We were made aware, a letter in last March from Chief Fisher made us aware of the fact that it's his opinion that we have a shortage of water at the airport to fight a fire effectively. He gave us an idea of what he thought we should have at the airport and it's, it would be a pressure water system or a large water supply, and neither one of those are physically or financially possible or even on the horizon. However, I don't think that releases us from the option, opportunity to try to do what we can to facilitate Chief Fisher's ability to fight a fire at the airport. To that end, I have begun a negotiation with AFC Finishing Systems owned by Carl...
Hagan.
Yes, thank you, Hagan, thank you. And through that negotiation, we have come to a tentative agreement on being able to use his existing water supply and fire hydrant to fight a fire at the airport should we need that. That hydrant is located 1.0 miles from the front gate of the airport. That would be a travel time of approximately 20, or excuse me, approximately two minutes at 30 miles an hour. Compared to driving to the city and trying to access water that way is probably an 80% savings in travel time to make that happen. He was, he's just fine with allowing us to use that, that water. In fact, Carl is a pilot and until a year or so ago was an aircraft owner. He is constantly, he is actually actively seeking another airplane at this time, and if he, is successful in buying one, he said he would consider building a hangar in our airport. So he may have a dog in the fight, so to speak, because his hangar could be one that could be put out by the fire from the water from his supply. The negotiation is basically complete. We agreed in general terms that he, he has no problem at all with us using water supply. I believe that he has made a capital expenditure in putting that system in and in maintaining it. It's an, it's a complex system to maintain, it has to have water circulation, the valves have to be heated and that sort of thing. So we discussed, he and I, a few options for remunerating him for that. They included a possibility of a monthly or annual stifle of some sort to help him with the maintenance. But what we concluded in the end was that probably the most elegant solution was to just buy the water from him should we ever need it. This will, so this won't cost the city anything upfront ongoing. It would only cost the city if, in fact, we, we need or use the water. I probably have the largest financial investment at the airport right now, I'll tell you right now, I will write that check and buy that water if that's what we need to do to put the fire out. The only, the only final thing that we haven't agreed on in our agreement would be what we would pay him for the water, and my suggestion is that we would pay him the same amount for the water that we sell water to other users for, which is $6.30 per thousand, is that correct?
Yes.
So we would, we would buy water from him at $6.30 per thousand, or whatever the current rate is that we're, that the city's using to sell water to other retail customers. So in a nutshell, that is it, and what I'm asking for is approval from you folks to finish the negotiation and enter into an agreement. Of course, once it, it would go through the city, whatever agreement I would come up with would go through the city and it would have to be voted on, but, so that's my theory.
So is Mr. Fisher okay with his agreement?
I'm sorry?
Is the fire chief, is he, is he okay with his agreement or?
To be, to be quite blunt, I don't care. I don't believe, we're not doing this to satisfy his requirement, we're doing this because we are unable to financially or physically supply the water that he would like to see there. Maybe someday, wait in the line, that will happen, but right now, that's not possible. I just don't believe, but I don't believe that releases us from the obligation to do what we can do, and what we can do now is, is supply 1,000, there's approximately a million gallons of water held in the pond at AFC Finishing, and that water can be available to us one mile away from the, from the airport. But no, it does not, it does not satisfy Chief Fisher's request.
If I recall, Jim, the options that the fire department has presented to us are substantially expensive with finances that I don't think we would have for many years.
I'm sorry?
We would, we wouldn't have the money for several years to be able to put in the system.
Correct. It's, it's, we, we investigated that, Natasha and I looked at some options that might be there, but just the ongoing maintenance of maintaining that amount of water is, you know, is pretty serious, not counting the capital expense of putting it in, so it's just not a realistic option at this time.
So the advantage is that this is still a substantial improvement over what we have now.
Right now, exactly.
It may not be what's asked, but it's a substantial improvement.
Yeah, absolutely.
And no cost.
So is, are there any consequences for us not complying with, with Chief Fisher's, I don't know, request or order or whatever it was?
So I believe that the letter from...
He says it's up to local jurisdiction.
Yeah. From Fisher, Chief Fisher, is basically, he was just making us aware that he didn't believe that there was enough water that could be brought to the airport at this time.
The letter was advisory.
Yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't a requirement. And we have taken that into consideration, and we're not, we're not saying no never, we're just saying no not for the foreseeable future, for many years out, before the, it would be the finances available to install and maintain that type of a system.
Maybe you could recruit Bill Gates to your board then?
I'm sorry?
Maybe you could recruit Bill Gates to your board?
Yes, we, I, I have, if I have a number on my phone, I could call him and... Yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
So how much money are we talking here to do what?
Several million.
Well, I can give you, before we go into that, the answer is I don't have that, I don't have an exact answer to that, but let me tell you what he's suggesting. He's suggesting that we would have, that we have enough water to fight a fire in the smallest building that is unprotected by any kind of fire protection. That would be a 30 by 40 hangar, 30 feet by 40 foot hangar. Those hangars have a 10-foot E-Vite, that's, so that's 1,200 square feet. If you take a 10-foot E-Vite, that's 12,000 cubic feet. And if you seal that building up and fill it full of water, it would hold 90,000 gallons of water. Chief Fisher says that we should have twice that amount, we should have 180,000 gallons of water in storage. That, honestly, that doesn't seem realistic to me, but I'm not a firefighter and so I will step aside with that, but... That honestly, that doesn't seem realistic to me, but I'm not a firefighter and so I will step aside with that, but it, it's, it's an amazing amount of water and it's just not something that would, that we could, we would have a physical place for. In fact, to put that system in, we would probably have to drill a second well. I don't believe the well that we have currently is adequate to even fill that tank and maintain it if it was open, an open pit. If it was a tank that, probably maintain it, but it would run almost constantly to do that. The proper place to put that would be probably at the other end of the airport, which is going to be more than a half mile away anyway. Even though it's on the airport premises, it would still be a half mile from, from where the fire would be. So this, this solution with Carl is to me a very elegant solution. This gives us access to a lot of water very close, that's already installed and approved, it's being maintained, and all we have to do is hook up and use the water.
So you still, you have to drive the fire truck over there, fill it up?
They would drive a tender. The fuel, the fire trucks would arrive full of water, but they have a tender and it would arrive full of water also. But as that water depleted, they would send the tender back to the fire hydrant and replenish it. In past, we did have a fire in the airport about five years ago, and they had to take, to replenish the tender, they had to run it all the way back to the city, which obviously takes a long time. So this would cut the travel time by eighty percent.
Probably takes a half hour to get a truck to town.
I'm sorry?
Probably takes a half hour to get a truck to town.
Yes, and even with that, even at that, they, the Fire Department was able to, the hangar that was, that was involved was a total loss, but they protected the hangar that was right next to it, one ten feet away, they did a great job. So even under those circumstances, they were able to, to maintain control of the fire enough to, to keep it from spreading. This option would, would greatly improve their ability to do that.
So having that, having that onsite, if we did what he asked, you still got to run the water through the fire hose on the truck, right?
Correct.
So it's not putting any more water on the fire than what we can do with, by running the tender, did you call it, back and forth and keeping the fire truck supplied?
Correct, that's all, that's all these are, these are a movable reservoir that allows the fire trucks to stay on station and continue to deliver water to the fire.
What they do, they go to find the site, set up a portable pool, dump all the water in, go fill, come back, dump all the water, go fill, dump all the water, go fill.
Okay, so the idea is by the time they use that water?
There's a lot of that.
The next load is there, right?
Maybe shuttle, just shuttle back and forth.
Okay. And if we had, if we had the water system on the airport property, we'd still be doing the same thing? Is that correct?
Precisely.
Over eight and a half a mile.
That's correct. It would not be a pressure water system, it would simply be a reservoir. And it would be, honestly, it would not be that much closer to the actual fire than what we have.
Actually, since it's not a pressure raised system, your fill time would probably even be less. You'd probably gain some time.
Ah, okay.
Having a pressure raised system.
Okay.
And the Weezer pool's a hundred and ninety thousand gallons?
Just for reference. He's asking for other details.
I truly believe that access to this will be satisfactory in the long term. I don't believe, unless, unless a requirement is placed upon the city to do something different, I believe this is an adequate supply of water to protect the airport indefinitely.
Jim, I only have the reservation, and I, reservation might not be correct, but what happens if Carl decides to sell this property?
The agreement would be with his company, which is AFC Finishing Systems. The agreement blew with him, so if he sells it, it would continue on as an agreement with them.
Okay.
And I suppose if the worst happened and they ended the agreement, then we would be forced to do something else. But until that happens, and I think that's pretty unlikely, we would have, at least for now, we would have done all that we can do to protect the airport and its assets.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Do you have any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we, well, I guess I'm not exactly sure what we're doing.
So all, all we're doing is making a motion to, to.
Continue the negotiation process and.
And write up an agreement.
And write up an agreement.
The agreement would then come back to City Council for final approval?
Well, I motion that we allow Jim and his amazing team to move forward with the negotiation process and return with something that has been satisfied. For final approval.
Sounds good. Okay.
All in favor?
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. And Parma's all right, too. Next is to consider sewer main bids for County Road and Bridge Alley. And Mr. Mike?
So what this is, is to replace the sewer main from East Eleventh to East Twelfth in the alley between Liberty and Court, right there at the Road and Bridge. That is a very old clay line that is failing and we've had it scheduled for replacement for quite some time. The bids in front of you are for the excavation and installation only, we have the pipe on hand. You can see that Anderson Excavation came in significantly lower than the other one, and the other one that I got was late, was even more than that one, so he was a little bit.
And this is a project that we've already budgeted for?
Yes.
We haven't had to steal from it for some other.
Not yet. It actually came in a lot lower than we anticipated, I mean, when we was budgeting for, we figured the excavation was forty-five to fifty, and this one came in at thirty, so this is actually. And he's done a lot of excavation for us, I have no reservations in using him at all.
So we do have a third bid?
We do. It was, it was higher than both of the ones that you have, it just came in before we could get these two used, so I didn't add it to it because it was higher.
But we do have three bids that.
Yeah, and by law, we don't even have to, anything under fifty thousand, we can just choose, so this was just a formality, nor a call, that you see what we're doing.
Okay. So you all like Anderson, good guy?
He, he's treated us very well in the past and we've never had issues with any of his work.
Yeah, we have done a lot of work with him.
Yeah, I've seen him a couple times now.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid proposal from Anderson Excavation LLC for the Washington County Drop Alley Sewer Line Replacement.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Von Redhorse, yes. Hopkins?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next is to consider extra expenditure for West Ninth Sewer Main.
Mayor, can we add ten and fourteen together in one? The one, the one was before we had the contract and we actually got the contract after we put in. This was my fault, I sent this to Natasha and then we got the contract in later and she had time to get it in there, so I kind of doubled them up. Would that work? I can have Bill come up and present the job and explain the extra cost all in one, one deal. And if we have questions, I can answer.
So we're doing what?
Nine, ten and fourteen.
Bill, we're going to do ten and fourteen as one.
Less than one or two separate.
Well, ten is sewer main, right? Oh, is ten sewer? No, ten is consider extra expenditure for West Ninth Sewer Main, that is supposed to be the water, I apologize. Let's, let's just skip, if you want to hold off and do fourteen, we can do all the ones in between and get fourteen and just minute then and we'll, we'll skip ten.
Okay, skip ten?
We can do that, yes.
Okay, let's skip ten. Code number eleven, approve and authorize the mayor to sign quick claim deed for Road to Water Plant. And Mr. Mike?
So what this is, is since Treasure Valley Farmers built their new building out there, they did provide us with the new road, I don't know if you've been out there to the water plant and to the Laird property. We have never had deeded property or even easement to ingress, egress out of there, so they agreed as part of the project to deed us over that thirty foot new road to us, and it includes the access to the San Grease Trap to the river that we never had before either. So this is definitely a positive, everything on here looks correct, we had the lawyer review this two years ago, it's been quite some time ago when this came to fruition, so this is just the final quick claim deed part of what we've already had reviewed.
So this is what we're swapping them for the new road?
Actually, there wasn't even a swap, they just offered to give it to us to put on in a new road. They built the road, they did all the, everything, and they're just.
Oh, so they're giving it to us?
They're quick claim deed.
This is them to us?
Yes.
Yep, they're going to quick claim deed the road to us.
Simultaneously, we just sign, accepting the quick claim deed.
Yes.
Brilliant.
Yeah, this is a win-win.
Larry, take it quick.
Okay, I move, we approve, whatever we're doing here.
You approve and authorize the mayor to sign.
And approve, yeah.
The quick claim deed. I second, I second Larry's motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You might want to turn the camera off, we're getting kind of silly here.
Battery died about an hour ago.
It's gotta be one, I got a second one.
Approve and, number twelve, approve and authorize the mayor to sign Weezer BPA request.
So if you read this, I worked with Larry Crowley on this, to, what this does is extends our contract with Bonneville through October, or I'm sorry, September thirtieth of twenty forty-four. This just keeps our contract the same as it is, and we were in agreeance that this is probably the best way to keep our costs down also. It keeps us in our tier one that we currently have without having to purchase tier two permanently. It does, if we go over, we have to buy power from the.
Market value? The market value?
Yeah, we have to pay market value, we have to go out to the market and purchase power. But right now, this is, in the foreseeable future, is the best way to keep our power, is cost effective.
And we only have, even though the contract, I believe expires in twenty twenty-eight, we only had so much time for, we have a deadline now to say that we're willing to take, extend that contract.
Right.
How often have we gone over our limits and had to go to market value?
Couple months, a year.
Like during the summer?
During the summer, there were a big one when AC drives, this year was. So we, it hasn't changed, the rebates that we were getting have, have, have run out of contract. We used to get quite a bit of, when they don't sell power, we get dividends back on that power, and we haven't seen those this last year, they were reinstituted, I want to say November, but I'd have to go back and look for sure on those, so we will see some of those cost savings again this summer. Last summer, unfortunately, we, we did not see the cost savings that we had in the past, they are working on that. However, it does not change how much we would have to go to the market and purchase.
Right.
We just may not see the, the rebate of dividends and that kind of stuff, power share.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
And we're currently in, doing a study on our.
Power solar panel, yeah.
Well, not only that, but our, our entire system and our rate structure.
Oh, oh, yes, that's right.
Yeah, we integrated the rate study into all of that together, so we could see, you know, cost of return and type of return, ROI.
Awesome.
Have you seen many people, the city limits go to solar power, has that started to affect?
We've started having an influx in people who have installed a solar. I don't know, I don't know the average household is going to see a return on that or pay for their investment.
Right now, our power is inexpensive enough that the, the cost to go to solar in the city limits without it being government funded or, you know, rebate to them, the return on it is significantly longer than a lot of places.
I, I figure it would take about twenty years myself.
Yeah, that's the average, is fifteen to twenty years on a solar. Unfortunately, Bonneville doesn't incentivize solar.
Sixty now.
Like some other.
So would you have a motion?
Yes, I motion that we authorize, that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Weezer BPA request.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the next item is approve and authorize the mayor to sign notice of intent to award Indian Head Pathways.
Yes.
And Mr. Mike?
So we did go out to bid to finish the Indian Head Pathway, which would be considered Phase Two from the high school to the Weezer Christian Church parking lot and Memorial Park Hill. It kind of all ties together in another grant, it was a bike grant back in the day. As you can see, the Idaho Dirt Co. came in at two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. This is a notice to proceed to contract with them. I would, I would ask that the council also puts in there that we can sign the contract, so we're not waiting till June to get this started. They're standing contracts that we will review, we've never had an issue with Keller reviewing these contracts that would kind of speed this project up a little bit, so we're not waiting to sign a contract in mid-June and they can't start. We'd like to have the project done by August, you know, when school starts.
Still not going on East Betterfield, though?
Yeah, yeah, not yet. You're number three hundred and thirty-four on the list, so. I will get there eventually.
Maybe not in our lifetime.
But if, if possible.
We don't have any experience with Idaho Dirt Company, do we? First time.
I have never worked with them personally, no, we have not.
Although we don't really have much choice, we have to go with a little bit.
Right, because they did meet all the criteria, they had all the, the right licensing and paperwork and everything like that, so we either have to reject them all and start over, or we approve to go forward with Idaho Dirt Contract, or Idaho Dirt.
Idaho Dirt.
Idaho Dirt.
Right, does this, does this put a sidewalk in front of the Mormon release?
This, this will, yes, this will be right there in front of that, all the way down the hill, across in front of the. The seminary building.
The reason we went to the seminary building before was because it required a.
Retaining wall.
A retaining wall that would be very expensive and we wanted to get as much sidewalk as we could.
He's silly.
I just love it.
Would there be a motion?
Yes, there would. Make a motion to approve the Indian Head Pedestrian Pathway Phase Two Sidewalk Project.
And sign the contract.
Notice bill, and contract.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll second that.
The motion also needs to include whether you guys want to authorize the sign of, of the contract later, never.
Yeah, I'll second that one as well.
It's been moved and seconded, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Von Redhorse?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to let, Bill, so what happened was is the intent to award is there, also the contract is there with the amount, so let me explain this, just so you have a head of what we're talking about.
So last year, we put in our budget to do a railroad crossing underneath West Ninth under the railroad track, so we could run a ten inch water main from the end of County Road Seventy and tie it into our system at West Ninth, to feed it on to the new subdivision on it that way. We got our bids in, I think we had four bids that came in on this. The high bid was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The low bid on this is, was two hundred and seventy-three, or, or, yeah, two hundred and seventy-three, five hundred dollars. So we budgeted two thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, but I have enough money in my construction line item to cover that overage. My recommendation is this isn't going to get any cheaper. I would like to proceed with that, I do have enough money in my budget currently to proceed with this project.
Any questions, discussion?
I can't tell you, this is project has been in this five-year plan for the last ten years.
Yes.
Well, let's get it off the list.
In this one, if you can also sign the notice of intent and the contract. I don't have their name.
It is Idaho Site Works.
Oh, Idaho Site Works. So yeah, the motion will need to sign the notice of intent to award and contract to Idaho Site Works.
And this is for them to jack and bore underneath the railroad tracks for a hundred and seventy-two feet and install the pipeline. We will need to continue on to tie in from that point to the East Idaho, or West Idaho and to the, the water main on the south side of County Road Seventy, but that can come out of next year's budget also, depending on how this budget comes up.
And you've already done some digging on both sides?
We pre-fought it just to give soil conditions.
Pretty good idea what they're going to get.
The last time they did, the bore was under third for the sewer line extension for Treasure Valley Farms and they ran into some really tough ground.
Unfavorable conditions.
Yes. They were able to get her done, this is a lot more favorable material on that side with those samples that we sent off to them.
And the reason we did that is it did save us, and they were going to fifty thousand dollars with them knowing what they were digging through.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign notice of intent to award. intent to award 9th Street Water Main to Idaho Sideworks, and-
Sign the contract.
Sign the contract.